Alright, so we're gonna get started. Start the public hearing for the Secocas Road Solar Project. I don't know if you guys wanna start off, if you have anything you wanna say before we take questions or comments from the uh.
Well, I'll just do a quick overview, nothing lengthy, and then maybe Rich. We'll just discuss what's changed.
Okay.
But just to recap, um, you know, my name's Brett Kingry, I worked for Saltage. We're the developer owner. I hired Tom, we hired Tom from TRC and Rich from the Getcher. To handle the permitting and the engineering of the project. Uh, you know, it's a four and a half megawatt pro- solar project on the town landfill brownfield. And, um, you know, I just wanna reiterate the benefits because that was a question that came up at the sidewalk. Uh, you know, what are the benefits and, um. To reiterate those, um, you know, there's lease revenue, there's tax revenue. Um, on land that's, uh. Pretty difficult to develop anything else. Zone commercial industrial for use like this. There, these are unburdened, it's an unburdened service to the town. Unbur- uh, you know, no tax burden. You know, Saltage will take over all the responsibility for the brownfield. Uh, remediation and risks. As part of that, of that lease. And, um, I think that, I just wanted to kinda reiterate that that's what we're, we're in for here.
Right.
Um, and I guess. Rich?
Yeah, sure.
Wanna cover what's changed from the last time we met?
Sure, just a quick add, um, I'm Mr. Evan, you're at the sidewalk, so you've heard some of this, um. Uh, after our last meeting here, we had our sidewalk and software recorder commission. Um, and then we had a discussion, a robust discussion on site with them about air concerns, um. And then we also had a few of our butters speaking from the backside of Secocas on the riverside to the meeting with Saco River and. Um, we were there for about ninety minutes or so with the Saco River and so. Going into the meeting with them, we tried to do our best to design change, change the project as much as possible to. To meet some of those concerns, um, the first of which resulted in a very small shift from the river part of the project. The commission wanted us to be a hundred feet off clearing any development, they wanted nothing within a hundred feet, so we, we bumped clearing back about three feet. To get to that, but, um.
We met their demand.
We met, we met the request, yeah, I mean, they said. It would be easier to check our box if you were a hundred feet, so we were a hundred feet, so we moved it back, that's, that's a small change down here, put that in the package, redesigned, sent out, um. And then also, uh, a lot of the butters, um, who live on the backside of Secocas between the landfill part of the project and the river. Um, have a lot of concerns, frankly not with the project, but with potential repercussions to the project with the existing, uh, perceived problem with the track. So, um, they didn't like the noise and the dust from the track when it's operating and they were afraid that our clearing was going to exacerbate that problem. So we, um, went back to our engineer, Tom Daniels, uh, looked at it a bunch of different ways to try to alleviate that. And then we moved about six tenths of an acre clearing on the backside, the riverside of the landfill. Um, which, which we think would alleviate any of the potential problems that, that our project would have in terms of how the, you know, how the sound would reverberate through there, get back to the properties, um. We heard from the landlords, we showed up, they were happy with the change, um, they spoke at the software recorder permission meeting, um, Andrew Cott spoke at the meeting and said that they were content with the change. Um, we got unanimous approval from the commission two weeks ago and then we had our meeting with you guys at the sidewalk on the fifth. Um, and right now really coming out of that, there were some concerns, um, that we talked about in the field, regarding any of the design changes and so. It's about where we are now, um, that, I have a procedure question, are we on the planning board agenda tonight as well as the public?
Yes, yes you are.
Okay.
Uh, let me double check, but I'm pretty sure you are.
Yeah, I just looked at it and I think I misunderstood that.
Yeah, number seven, site plan review, Richard George, Secocas Road Solar Project. Yeah, you're on the agenda, so.
Good.
Stick around next week, yeah.
Okay, thank you, that's, that's really most of our.
Okay, is there anything from the public, any questions directly to the applicants here, any concerns?
Just a quick question.
Can you state your name for the, uh, record?
My name's Heather Ricker.
Okay.
Is the power being sold back from the town or is it going into the power grid?
Into the grid. Yeah, the town, um, doesn't really have the ability to absorb the, the amount of power that we'll generate. Anything else?
Hi, calling out, I'm, uh, on a butter to the property. And I was just wondering if, um, you moving it further away from the river, not just the three feet, but then away from the track more? Or where it was gonna be, the dust and stuff, does that mean that you're going closer to where my property I would be? And if so, um, I apologize, I didn't get to the sidewalk, which I had intended to, but I have a local business that. Didn't allow it and, um. I didn't get to see exactly how this works and if it's super loud or anything like that, so I was just curious about that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, so let me address the noise question, um, there's no noise.
No.
That's one of the nicer things about solar arrays is there's no, they don't make any noise. Um, there is a transformer or two, depending on the ultimate design. That's, it's similar to like a transformer you can see at a CBS or a small. And that's in the center of the array and the, the decimal rating of those transformers, um. And I can give you the exact, uh, sign, you know, engineering, uh, decimal rating. I, but, uh, you won't hear anything, there's no noise.
I guess on that on the site, I think the breakdown was on the website for the kind of, the problem that they did.
Um, and, uh, in terms of location, you're over by the main covered area, that side of the river, that side of the stream.
I'm right next to that, I'm having.
Uh, the footprint and chain, he shrunk the clearing, so the, the project did move and afterward it was Saco River and the butters, um. So, there's still, uh, I think there's a seventy-five foot no clearing, no disturbance on the project side of that stream, that separates your property and the, um, the estate property. And then there's an area that's already cleared, that we're gonna maintain treeless, but not, just, just gonna be brush hogging, you know, and people treeless, so.
So to answer your question, she, so your question was, we, we moved the, the, uh, we expanded the forest this way. But the, but it didn't move the array.
Okay.
If the array hasn't moved, uh, because of that.
So if I'm not mistaken, this particular parcel that you're talking about. I, I think it was the person who won't get prior, maybe, uh. It's, Hobbie, is that the piece that Steve Barton clear cut?
I can't hear you.
Is that the parcel that Steve Barton clear cut?
Steve Barton, I mean.
Right directly behind my house.
Twenty-seven acre yard behind him?
Yeah.
That, that's now over by George Stacy.
Okay.
And that was clear cut, so there really is no advantage to anything back there.
No, I know, okay, well, the reason I was asked about that was because once that piece was clear cut. You, we brought all the noise from over the bridge back to my backyard, like, there was such a change in how quiet my property was. But then they clear cut it and then it was like all of a sudden we could hear everybody that went by, every.
Hundred and sixty?
Uh, yeah, uh, I'm twenty-five, you never saw it in the river.
And this was clear cut here.
Yeah. So, yeah. So, yeah, I was just curious if it, and I, like, just that we're clearing that little piece. I couldn't believe how much more raised it was on my property, that's why I was a little curious, but, thank you, yeah.
Um, any other questions or comments from, yes ma'am, can you state your name for the?
Kathy Cotts, um, way directly below the racetrack and I just wanna thank Saltage for redesigning to. Take our concerns into consideration. It was also the Saco River Commission, Saltage and the CEO Jesse suggested that. This would be a good time to bring up the fact that a berm needs to be put in place for the racetrack. Because of the noise and dust from it. Um, and they're gonna have all their equipment there and they're willing to work with the owner of the racetrack. So we just want that on record.
Alright.
We were out there late today when they were racing.
I- is that something that you guys agree to, to, uh, work on a berm there?
Well, so it was, it was before we decided to, to not cut the trees. That was a suggestion and we actually, um, we, we had some concerns about permitting, uh. The permitting that would go along with the, so, thank, nice to meet you, we talked on the phone and, um. And I've worked with your son and your husband, um, on, on the sidewalk with the Saco River, so, uh, I think that was pretty productive. Um, you know, it took us a while to work through and, you know.
We're married, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, thank you, um. It was originally, we, we were gonna cut those trees down behind the Cott's house, there was still a buffer. If there's, um, elevational buffer and tree buffer that would've been left, but it seemed to be just a pain point and. We were able to cut, uh, trim of, trim a corner of the, of the project back, just, um. You, you know, it just seemed like in the best interest of. We had suggested the berm before we decided to cut the trees and I, um, so I, I guess. Um, how, help me out here, I, we're willing to, we're willing to help out with the berm, but I, I don't wanna have that as our responsibility if it causes other problems.
Correct, that it isn't your responsibility, it's the, the owner of the racetrack and the town not enforcing. What he's supposed to have done years ago. Because we didn't realize we were able to do something, it should be a sound barrier up in the berm.
Right, so we're happy to help out.
Okay, I got you, but that's the responsibility of the racetrack owner, more so than it would be Saltage.
Or the town, or, yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
But my concern from a purpose standpoint is I don't know, we were, we got this far, I don't know if that would wrap in your process, if that really part of our site plan review or. Possibly harder if that would be part of the software recorder commission review, because portion of the track is in the corridor. That's a whole other point that they're starting to look at and work out and I'm a little concerned about what would happen to us if we get involved in.
But, but I guess it all boils down to noise abatement and that's what you're willing to work with the, uh, butters on, to do whatever you did, you, you left some trees up and, and that, that's the concern there, so.
That's what we'll sign up for is, and which we were definitely, we'll leave, uh, you know, a portion of, not quite an acre of forest. Behind their house and, you know, we, we agreed we, we'd leave that for them.
Alright, any other concerns from anybody or comments, questions?
A quick question, am I allowed to ask a question that does, that's not relative to the, you know, uh, things, real quick question, I, is CMP, are they, uh, uh. Obliged to pur- to purchase what's you put out?
Yeah, yep, so, um, I meant to mention that. We have a, a signed interconnection agreement with CMP finally and, um. Uh, the project is in a transmission level study now, which is another level complication in cost for us, but, um, that's part of the deal.
It's long term though, I mean, I'm, I'm, long term is sort of my focus on, on things, you know, so. Again, all of a sudden a year from now saying, or five years from now, saying, don't forget it, we don't want your power.
No, um, so when Governor Mills signed into law, um, LD seventeen eleven, th- this particular solar bill, um. That required the utilities to buy the power. They didn't like this, um, you know, but, uh, they, they have to comply.
Yeah, great.
So that's sort of back to your question.
And, uh, one other question, is there, uh, a planned obsolescence for the panels, I mean, they cannot last forever, so. Is that built into any of the, uh, you know, financial, uh, things you presented and so on, or is it just gonna happen?
Yeah, that's a good question and, and we get this a lot, um, and it's, cause it's a good question, um. The, um, so, you know, the plan is, at, what we factor into our models. Is that these particular panels that we'll buy next year, um, for example. Will continue to run for at least twenty years, their warranties are now twenty-five years, which is really super long.
Yeah.
And all, uh, measures indicate that panels continue to perform that long, they do slowly degrade over time. Uh, that degradation is factored in, um, what nobody really knows is, and this kinda gets to the meat of your question. Is with the rate of technological advancement, what is the future gonna bring? And, and we don't know, you know, and it's hard to even, I, it's hard for me to wrap my mind around it. They, we could, you know, because this solar program is a twenty-year program in Maine. You know, it's often just easiest just to keep things as is and, um. And not disrupt, uh, but I could sit, but you could see a scenario in twenty years. That, um, new panels are put in and the project continues to run for an additional ten or fifteen years after that. Um, you know, and continue to contribute, uh, the lease revenue to the town and, and so forth, and the tax revenue, so. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, that's, that's it, I mean, I realize, yeah, you don't have a crystal ball and, uh, uh. Panels become more, much more reliable than when I, when I was in R and D for Tyco, uh, but, uh, good, yep, that's it, um.
Okay, anything else, any, anything from the board, no, Thelma, any questions?
No, I'm, I'm just trying to see how far this is from Elm Street.
Yes, sir.
You want to finish with that, Thelma?
Um, we'll give her a few minutes to go over that, but if you have a question while she's looking at that guy, can you state your name for the record?
My name's Jim Beck, uh, here digging down in Saco River. And, um, so I was there with a local and that's, uh, the, and the concern here is, you know, it's like my second home. And what he's presenting is maybe like a huge parking lot with chain link fence and everything, click back to its old panels. Like, we've been going in there since the seventies. And I don't understand why there can't be even like an eight-foot buffer zone or leaving the stuff raw. I know he says he needs every inch of sun. But there's some areas that it's gonna be like seventy-five feet from the road, but it's still everything gonna be clipped up, I don't understand. Why can't we have a small buffer?
Well, yeah, so I think, if I understand you correctly and we haven't met, um. Um, the, you're talking about a buffer along the road.
Correct.
And that's right in the middle of the array.
Hmm?
That's right in the middle of the solar array, so any trees, uh, you know, um.
It's like, in some areas, it's like seventy-five feet.
Seventy-five feet.
Um, like the stem of the road, like, like what you stopped in the last week.
Oh, yeah.
Um, this where it's wired, that's where the power line is, there's some areas.
Yeah, this is.
This area.
So tree, so. You know, there's a three to one, um, I think it's three to one is the ratio of shading. Um, so if a tree is this tall, it's, it casts three times its height in shade. And that's the fundamental problem, especially in the winter, when the sun, if I got my angle here, this, in the summer, the sun's up here-ish. Um, and then in the winter, it goes down, so if you have trees, that three-one gets even more, it has even more shade in the winter. Uh, which dramatically affects the productivity.
So how far from the center of the road, how the panel will be, how far is the fence and how far are the panels? We start with this one.
Yeah, twenty-five feet from the edge of the existing gravel to the fence and then there's another fifty feet from fence that handle.
That's like forty feet, so you can leave a ten-foot, ten-foot, um, lawn tree, that wouldn't even affect anything. Like you say, you scale three to one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, as we talked about, you know, the biggest issue with maintenance is keeping it at ten feet, because some trees grow fast and others, we're constantly coming in, dropping trees and then turning with the trees.
And what's, how many of you understand the, the concerns that we have, you, you don't wanna look at the panels?
Well, it's, it's like you're driving through this area here, you have a road that you've always been on, now all of a sudden everything's clicked, like you have nothing to pull, and then you have a chain link fence.
Yeah, I, I guess, maybe this is, this might be a matter of perspective, I mean, the times, you know, we often have seen. I guess from my perspective and I, and, and I'll admit it may not align with your perspective, um. Uh, this is a five million dollar project, it's a, it's a very professional, commercial, um. Power plant, right, that's quiet and, um, and this, in our perspective, and again, it may not align with yours. This, our expectation is that this is gonna change the atmosphere. Right now, we've heard of landowners talking about drug deals going on, we caught a guy dumping when we were there, you're not gonna see that with this type of commercial.
Are you gonna have barriers, yeah, are you gonna have barriers or something?
No, but, no, you're gonna have the area fence off, so. It's gonna be, uh, it's gonna change the atmos, it'll change the atmosphere.
Yeah, well, okay. Basically, yeah.
Okay, so, um, I, I'm, longer concern there is that. Okay, um. Oh, sorry, Harvey.
I have, uh, one thing, I know some of these people have been there for quite a few years. And I wonder if you were still there when the lock shop was, uh, still in operation.
I was here.
Because that was not a pretty sight up there at that point.
Piles of sawdust, piles of bark on, there's just solar panels every place, no trees.
Harvey is.
Honestly?
Despicable as that was in those days.
That, that's probably not despicable. Like looking at fire, you know, that's okay.
I have a question, uh, trees coming down between Secocas Road and the river.
Yes, where the lock shop was, yes.
No, between. The.
I think that's the general area that you were just discussing there, so again, they are, they are talking about taking the trees down there.
Yeah.
That is the area they were just discussing.
Okay.
So there'll be no trees along the river?
Yeah, in this map, so the, the blue is the solar panel, that's gonna be grass, that's gonna be. Grasswood panels, this, this tan pink area, that's area we're just keeping treeless, so this has been cleared before, it's now twenty years or so growth, this was cut relatively recently.
How close to Elm Street is the, is it treeless?
Uh, it's just over five hundred feet to Elm Street from the property. Thank, because we picked up some of these cornerous landowners when we did the abiding notification of Saco River.
Okay.
But I don't think it crosses Elm Street, so it's about five hundred feet probably from the edge of the river.
So it's gonna be chain link fence along the, the, um, road there, right? And I think the concern of one of the butters is the, um, the aesthetics.
Thank you.
Would, would you be able to consider possibly, you know, you can buy the chain link fence with the inserts in it that you can't see beyond the chain link fence? That would be, it wouldn't be a buffer that would grow up and block out sun, but it wouldn't be a buffer, a visual buffer nonetheless, weaved into the chain link fence. I mean, it would be an added expense for you guys too.
If that's, if that is collectively what people think is more, is, looks better, then, I mean, we'd be open to that, you know. I, we had towns that people don't think it looks better, so, but I'm not gonna debate, again, some of this is like beauties in the eye of the beholder, right? And that's, we could probably debate that all night, um. So I don't know if vinyl, if, if the town, if the planning board thinks that vinyl, uh, weaving is better, then, you know, we'll work. I think we should, we'll, we'll, we'll work with people, right?
Uh, could you consider a green chain link fence, green, green in color, that something even conceivable, possible?
Yeah.
I think they make the vinyl insert is, is a green color anyway.
Yeah, yeah, vinyl, the, the only, only concern with vinyl is they, they dent, they get dirty, et cetera, I mean, I've never seen those inserts. Really last very long.
They're remaining, and this comes up a lot, just when we're sort of arguing between augmenting the fence or planting or leaning trees or putting some sort of. The only time I see the vinyl inserts on the fence are at landfills, like, preventing me from looking at active sort of operation. And this isn't that, um, I mean, the thing that we talked about, you know, I mean, we could limit the time we could do brush hogging outside the fence, I mean, right now, it looks like it's. Five years since CMP's probably done any maintenance or the town's done any maintenance, I mean, obviously there's no, um, that's some maintenance of the trees. So we'll limit the, the times they do the, um, brush hogging to the times when it's needed, so maybe every three, five years. I mean, that was something that the people started throwing out there on the tables, at least it would look similar to the way it looks now on the, on the south side of the road, bottom of the map. Um, I mean, it, it just, it, it gets hard, usually like, like, bro, I'm sorry, they, they want this to be a finished project when the, you know, when the, when the engineer, I mean, when the developer comes. The contractor comes and builds project, we want, we need a hundred percent vegetation growth, grass on the panels, upside of that, we need no trees over some, some foot, you know, it really, it's brush hogging everything. How do we maintain that so that we don't have to go in there and cut, you know, the pines that grow really fast every two years or the, um. Quaking aspens that grow really fast and do fat leaves that really start to bother us after a couple of years, um. I mean, maybe it's just a matter, like I said, just, just adjusting the maintenance schedule specifically between the fence and the road. Limiting it to something so there's some revegetation, I mean. I'm spitballing.
I have a question, there's a, um, farm on Elm Street, it comes right down to Elm Street. And there's a farm on the other side of the street between Secocas Road and Elm Street, how are they gonna be affected?
If they're on Elm Street, I don't think they'll be affected, right, I mean, there's gonna be distribution holes from CMP, that's on Secocas. Right, on the other.
Put in on Elm Street, um, I, I don't know, I mean, affected in any way specifically, I, I, I don't know, they can't, I don't think they can see the project, it doesn't make noise, with the lights, um, won't be much traffic. Um, will be anti-traffic except for a couple times a year, uh.
Well, there's a good-sized farm on the left of Elm Street.
Right on the corner, a little over the goat.
No, that, that's one farm, but that's not, there's a farm on the other side of the street, the Stacey's.
Yeah, I don't.
That's not in the close, that's not in the.
That's not even close, huh?
Yeah, it's not even close.
Yeah. Uh, it, it more affect.
Okay, so the only one that's affected is the one on the other side of the street.
And they won't be affected?
Yeah, I don't think that it affects, I mean, there's, it's, there's no contamination, there's, we don't use water, no.
Okay.
This, uh, it's like I said, we, we have to go through a normal water process, improvement process from state of the day and so, no, no erosion, segmentation, you know, water quality, no air quality changes. Um, it's quiet, well, any blasting on here, it's all sand, so that won't affect the animals if they're animal bones.
Alright, is there, is there any other questions from the audience, any other comments? No, anything from the board?
Uh, on the project, is it gonna be like the start to finish and what does that, what effect would that have when the road comes in and, you know, stuff like that, like. Will it be repaired to normal after it's gone and stuff like that?
Yep, yeah, so, yeah, good question, um, typically, I usually say four to six months construction, might be safer to say six months, given weather and seasonality. Um, if we started, you know, um, in late fall, then there'd be a break for your winter or so, but if you had uninterrupted seasonality. Um, you know, four to six months, um, we would ensure that all the roads are, um, capable of handling, uh, construction vehicles. Um, and if there was any, um. If the, the road would be as good or better, uh, from the work that we would do on the Secocas Road.
From Elm Street to the top of the hill, basically, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think I, I think I said we could, you know, suggest that as a potential condition, but it's all in the plans, we're actually out there, we have other plans and it's. The, the plans are, whatever their planning board approves, they approve the plans and we're beholden to the plans, the plans ride with the, that's gospel.
And the fence will be averaged fifty feet apart. Though you said twenty-five feet from the center of the road?
Yeah, but that's the road, I think it's.
So the edge of the road, the center of the road, so, twenty-five feet from the edge of gravel is the nearest point of the fence, so it's. So it's six, seventy-five feet, seven, three, twenty-five, plus one.
So how far is this from the sand and gravel shit?
From what, I'm sorry?
The sand and gravel shit.
That's the, the brown area around that.
Yeah, right there.
It's all around it.
It's all around it, yeah.
Six being closed.
Once the project's built after, let's say, six months, then there's, uh, visits only twice a year. Two people in a, in a pickup truck twice a year, so there's no traffic after that six months. Um, and maybe there's a few, within the first few months of the six months, but basically, once it's operational. Twice a year, spring and fall typically, two, you know, two guys, two gals, whatever, and a pickup truck, two people. And, um, twice a, twice a year and that's it, so there's really no, no traffic, I mean.
Yeah, like landscapers once a year to make sure we're not growing over our panels.
Inside the fence.
Okay, anything else? No? All right, then I guess we'll close the public hearing, um, folks, stick around for the, um, for the meeting afterwards, we do have several things that we will be addressing other than that, so you might have to stick around for a little while, but, um. We'll close the public hearing for now and we'll.